I call the meeting to order. This is first, the public hearing of the Board of Selectmen of East Line, who is having a public hearing on, I guess, an ordinance to put a moratorium on any zoning, land use items surrounding cannabis. It was published in the newspaper. Let's first stand and announce our pledge to the United States of America, if we could.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got you all out of the house tonight. Shook it up a little bit, huh? So it's been a while since we've had an ordinance, a request, if you will, and considering an ordinance, and that's what we're doing tonight, is considering an ordinance. And when we do that, we publish in the newspaper, as we have, and I'm not sure if anybody can get the newspaper anymore, but we do do that, and we post it on the webpage. And then we have a public hearing. And then we have a healthy discussion among us. And that's what we'll call for tonight. So we'll start the public hearing. And what we'll do is have you come up and state your name, obviously, and your address. And we want to limit you to, you know, no more than five minutes. Three minutes would be great, but you know, we're not looking for presentations. We're looking for public comment. And if you would be brief, it would be advantageous to everybody in the room. So Mrs. Cheeseman, you rank here. Would you like to go first?
I know, I'm happy to have everybody else go.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd love to wrap up.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, thanks.
So I'm Lori Zerenda. I live at 40 Mostaway Road in East Line. I'm a lifelong resident of town. I'm a licensed pharmacist. And along with my niece, Meredith Elmer, we opened Thames Valley Relief, the medical marijuana dispensary, in 2014. So we have about seven years of experience with marijuana. I'm hoping to maybe put some of your minds at ease about it and answer any questions, hopefully, if you have it. So I might be that five-minute person. First, I wanted to do a quick outline of the bill, which is now a law, for people who might not know. And the regulations were just released on October 1st, which I read through, and they're about exactly the same as the medical marijuana regulations. It's pretty strict. This bill will allow adults 21 and older to purchase marijuana. They only allow one dispensary per town. So unless your town has more than 50,000 residents, you can't have more than one. So that's one thing that East Line wouldn't have to worry about. The state's going to decide on how many licenses they're going to give out. We don't know how many that's going to be, but it's a finite number. And if more people apply for a license, then there are licenses available. They're going to have a lottery. And the lottery winners will be the ones who get the licenses. The town gets 3% of the gross sales tax revenue. The state gets 6.35% tax revenue in addition to that. And there's another tax based on the level of THC in the products. THC is your active ingredient. It's the psychotropic part of the plant. So the more THC, the higher the tax you're going to pay. The revenue for the town is earmarked for certain uses, and I don't know if everyone knows this or not, so I'll tell you really quick what they are. To make improvements to the streetscapes and other neighborhood developments in the community in which a retailer or a cultivator is located. To fund education programs or youth employment and training programs. To fund services for individuals released from the custody of corrections, probation, or parole that reside in town. To fund mental health and addiction services, which I think is the biggest thing. To fund youth service bureaus and municipal juvenile review boards. And to fund efforts to promote civic engagement in communities. So the adult use law also is going to be different than the medical marijuana. The percentage of THC is restricted in the regulations. So if you're a medical marijuana patient, you could get THC levels of up to 90% or so in your product. They're restricting that. In the recreational program, you won't be able to buy products that potent. The bill allows the town to ban use of marijuana in public places and in restaurants, which I hope you do. The use of products on the dispensary property or inside the dispensary is prohibited, just as it was in medical marijuana. So no use there, and it's strictly enforced. Products are lab-tested, which is huge, because marijuana on the street could be full of pesticides, and God knows what other fentanyl or who knows what else could be in them. Every product in the legal programs is going to be lab-tested, not only for potency, and there's labeling requirements, and lab testing for contamination. So at least the consumer's going to know they're buying a safe product. I know a lot of people have very different opinions about marijuana. We were taught in school that it's a gateway drug. It's bad. It's like putting an egg in a frying pan and burning your brain out. And that's, I mean, for youth, yes. There's studies that prove that marijuana use can be detrimental to the developing brain. And that's why it's 21 and older. But the fact of it being a gateway drug is a misconception. If you go to the National Institute of Drug Abuse website, you'll see that they say up to 80% of heroin users begin with opioid prescription drugs, not with marijuana. If you'd told me in high school I'd be selling marijuana, and as an adult, I would tell you, you're crazy. But I learned, and that's what everybody has to do. They have to get educated. The idea that it's a gateway drug isn't true. I mean, we had 6,000 patients at the dispensary that we served. If you ask any one of them if they felt that their marijuana use made them feel they needed to use a harder drug, they will tell you no. And there might even be patients here tonight that could attest to that. Alcohol is legal, and it's much more harmful than marijuana is. Marijuana is not toxic. You can't take enough and have a fatal event. You can't overdose and die. The opposite's true for alcohol. If you drink too much, you'll have liver failure, 0.6%, 0.8% alcohol blood level, and you're going to be not here anymore. And yet, we accept alcohol as pretty normal. There's package stores and bars everywhere. You know, some people have a concern that marijuana is illegal on a federal level, but it's legal on a state level. And there's a lot, there's a few things I want to tell you about that. California legalized medical in 1996. Washington State and Colorado legalized recreational in 2012. And since then, the federal government's done a few things to kind of show us that they're really staying, they're keeping out of it, I guess, is the way to put it. There's something the Justice Department put out called the Cole Memo. The Cole Memo advises federal prosecutors to refrain from marijuana prosecutions in states that have legalized cannabis, with some exceptions. And that's in cases where there might be drug cartels or gangs or distribution to minors or distribution across state lines. But basically, the Cole Memo says that as long as states are regulating and enforcing their own laws, the federal government will stay out of it. And every year since 2014, Congress has approved a rider to the annual Justice Department Appropriations Bill that states that federal funds will not be used to interfere with state legal marijuana programs. So we now have 48 out of 50 states with medical programs. We have 18 states with adult use laws. We have years of experience with the federal government to show that they're letting the states regulate that. And there was also a court case in Connecticut where a federal judge upheld that. It was actually a Niantic company. And the case was Noff Sinner versus Niantic Operating Company, which owns Bridbrook Nursing and Rehab. They had a potential employee that did a drug test that came back negative, I mean, positive for THC. That patient was a medical marijuana patient. And the Connecticut law says that you can't discriminate against a medical patient for, you can't not hire them or fire them for using their medical marijuana. That's the state law. This went to a federal court, and the judge, well, Bridbrook argued that because marijuana is illegal based on the Controlled Substance Act, and because they received federal funding, that they were required to rescind the job offer. A federal judge ruled against Bridbrook. He found that even though marijuana is illegal based on the Controlled Substances Act, it doesn't say you can't employ someone who uses marijuana, and unless it specifically and expressly is prohibited by the Controlled Substance Act, then there is no preemption. For another example, if the Controlled Substance Act said that towns couldn't tax cannabis sales, then it would be illegal, no matter what the state law said. There's nothing in the Controlled Substance Act that requires municipalities to enforce that federal law, and nothing prohibits them from permitting a licensed dispensary to operate within the town. This ban that you're proposing, it's--
I'm not proposing a ban.
Well, a six-month moratorium.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. It's really not needed, because the state hasn't done anything. The bill passed in June. It's been six, four months, four months since then. The state hasn't set out any applications, set any deadlines for applications or any information about the lottery process. So there's time. If you want to read the bill and you want to go through it, it's going to be a lengthy process. Because the application is going to require information from the applicant, like we had to do with medical marijuana, you had to send, you had to give the state your business plan, your marketing plan, your security plan. And you had to present the state with all your town approvals, your zoning and all that stuff, fire marshal, everything. If this moratorium is in effect during the application process, an applicant wouldn't be able to produce that information to the state, and they're going to go elsewhere. And if that happens, then East Line will miss out on this revenue. I spoke with two owners of adult-use dispensaries in Massachusetts, and they told me that based on their gross sales, the town could expect to receive $600,000 to $1.2 million per year in tax revenue. So especially with mental health and addiction, think of the money you could do with, you know, what you could do with that money. You know, the state's going to decide how many licenses they issue. Once those licenses are given out, that's it. So you don't have time to wait and see what's going to happen in this town or what's going to happen in that town. The licenses are going to go out, and then that's it. So, you know, you're closing the door to this if you vote for this moratorium, because there's that risk of applications coming out in that six-month period. You can certainly go ahead and ban the use in public places. I think that's awesome. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that, you know, as elected officials, we hope that you vote with your constituents in mind. And there was a Sacred Heart poll from April of 2021 in Connecticut showing that only 18% of Connecticut residents strongly oppose recreational marijuana. So I just hope that you don't base your vote on antiquated ideas, that you look at facts and the experiences we've had in our state already, and just realize that you might be blocking things in the application process and missing out on that revenue if you go through with this moratorium. And if anybody has questions about anything, I'm happy to answer them.
And we don't do their term of publicity.
All right.
Thank you. I may have done you a disservice, Lori, and everyone else in the room. I should probably let you know what the ordinance is about. And I'm sorry I interrupted your testimony, but I wanted to correct that. We are not trying to ban marijuana. And if you're here tonight to testify that marijuana is good or marijuana should be allowed or the $600,000 in income we're going to get is worth it, that's going to be for another day. What we're talking about today is putting a pause on any approvals until we look into the bill, until the legislature knows what they passed. And we might hear from Holly Cheeseman tonight, our state rep, who might say, yeah, nobody really knows how this is going to work out. Do we want to be the first town on the block or in the state or among the first towns to test it out? You know, there's, so we're asking for a six-month moratorium so that we can look at, and it's, the way moratoriums work is it's an ordinance with a sunset. So I want to be very clear. It is still an ordinance that will sunset six months to the day after we enact it. There are, there are many things to consider other than whether the use of it is good for medical reasons, for tax reasons, or what the heck, the train's coming down the tracks, let's just do it reasons. There's also building code issues. There's the cultivation and production of marijuana edibles. There's the legislative health district that needs to get involved, because you're creating food, consumables. There's not just zoning regulations, building, fire code violations, as some of the production involves dangerous gases and fluids. There's also the conditions of operation, the hours that would be allowed. Will we allow drive-throughs, home delivery? That happens in other states.
It's all in the bill.
Right. And so we want to study that bill, and we want to be clear about that. And that's why, you know, trying to be the first town to allow this might not be the best for our town. I have no question that train's coming down the track, and nobody's trying to ban this. And I'm not trying to editorialize here. I'm trying to let you know that if you're here tonight to tell the Board of Selectmen marijuana is good or marijuana is bad, we just want to study the bill to make sure that we put the right parameters, the right building code, the right safety code, maybe extra personnel involved or training for that personnel to know that butane fluid, butane gases is not necessarily, it needs to be handled a different way.
They don't allow that.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry.
I know. We need to know that, because it does happen. Because houses blow up in Denver, Colorado.
Can you tell us what the six months is based upon? Meaning some sort of data that you collect?
So we're going to let the public hearing go. Six months is just a pause. We didn't go to a year. We didn't go two years. We didn't try to, you know, backdoor. Let's pause it for five years. No, six months.
It was a subjective duration of time that you guys just--
That would be enough time for the new administration to come here and put together a subcommittee and move forward.
Excuse me, Mr. President. This is a time for debate.
Yeah. So we'll go on to a public hearing. Yes, ma'am. Say, "Rep"? Sure.
Thank you. Holly Cheeseman, 16 Mitchell Drive, Niantic, Connecticut. I'm also the state representative. And maybe, and I say, I won't even include Ms. Zerenda. There's probably no one in this room who knows this bill better than I do, because since I was elected to the legislature, this has been on our radar. In 2017, I served on the Finance Committee when this was debated. In 2019, it came before two of the committees on which I serve, Finance and General Law, where I was the ranking member. This is a 300-page bill that actually went through four iterations. The Senate had to vote on it three separate times. I have the OLR summary here, and it's printed double-sided. It's 183 pages. So to say that this board should not take a six-month moratorium to study all the details, the Department of Consumer Protection regulations to which Ms. Zerenda referred are 54 pages alone. And as the first selectman said, we're not here to debate the benefits of medical marijuana. Connecticut has one of the best and most well-run medical marijuana programs in the country. We're here to discuss whether, as a town moves forward with a new retail establishment, they should take the time and do the due diligence and research to decide, is this something we want in our town? And I think, from the experience of other states, the answer is not necessarily yes. We've heard about the 3% sales tax that's going to come to the town. I'm sure all of you have infinite trust in the legislature. I believe I've heard promises before of taxes that were to go to town coffers and ended up going in the general fund. Lottery money for education, pilot funds, MRSA. There was a half a percent put on new car sales tax that was meant to come to municipalities. That disappeared. Excess cost sharing for special education. And with the specific areas where the money can be spent, at least three of them appear to me to deal with the negative effects of legalization. I have here the High Impact Drug Trafficking Association study from 2021 that looks at what happened in Colorado with legalization. Traffic deaths in which drivers tested positive for marijuana increased 135%, while all Colorado traffic deaths increased 24%. Traffic deaths involving drivers who tested positive for marijuana more than doubled. Past months, I think one of the biggest concerns is the normalization for teenagers. And we can say all along that it's not legal for anyone under 21. Yeah, like kids don't get in their parents' liquor cabinets. Past-month marijuana use ages 12 and older increased 30% and is 76% higher than the national average. Past-month adult marijuana use increased 19% and is 73% higher than the national average. Child poisonings have gone through the roof. In fact, Yukon Health has asked for additional funds to deal with the poison control hotline, because they know that more children will ingest this and be poisoned. Ms. Zerenda talked about it's much better to get this from a licensed retailer instead of the black market. Colorado still has 30% of its sales on the black market. In Massachusetts and California, 80% of the sales still take place on the black market. Why? Because it's cheaper, guys. The state has put a ton of tax revenue on it, and people who've been buying it know who their dealer is, know where to get it. The idea that this is going to be a windfall for the state of Connecticut, that we need the revenue, in the first two years, the state gets 100% of the revenue. After that, the vast majority of the revenue goes to the Social Equity Fund, which is directed at towns where the impact of the war on drugs was most pronounced, i.e. our cities. 25% goes to deal with the increased substance abuse problems that have resulted. Marijuana addiction is the fastest-growing ailment that will be, is treated by substance abuse. And when people say addiction, oh, no, no, you know, you don't go through withdrawal. According to the CDC, one in 10 adults and one in six under-18-year-olds who use today's marijuana become addicted, as in their life is dominated by the need to get high and remain high. This is not your grandmother's marijuana. Ms. Zerenda referenced 60% potency per THC. Marijuana available to be grown in the '80s was 4%. There was comparison was made to alcohol. Brewers have not gone out of their way to make alcohol from 4% to 8% to 80%. It's as if you're Rip Van Winkle, and you went, fell asleep, and you were used to going into a bar and having a couple of beers. And you went to sleep for 40 years, and you went in and had two beers, and you were under the table. I think there are so many issues involved in this. There is no guarantee of increased revenue that will come forever and ever on men. There is no guarantee that this will not end up like big alcohol and big tobacco. Indeed, I believe Ms. Zerenda sold her medical marijuana dispensary to one of the larger companies. There is no guarantee that our police, who because of the Police Accountability Bill now can't stop people if they smoke, smell marijuana. There's no test for this. I think we need to take the time to decide whether or not this is something we want in our town and weigh up all the pros and cons and go into this in a steady, studied manner. I've made no bones about the fact that I have opposed this from the beginning. And as you say, that horse is out of the barn. But what I want everyone to realize that this is not a benign substance. This is a very, very strong chemical that has major effects on particularly the developing brain. And I know Dr. Mallett is going to talk after me, so I'm sure I've taken more than my five minutes. I would be happy to share any of my information with anybody here, but I'm asking you, let us take the time to really look into this, hear the pluses, hear the minuses, and decide if this is something we want in East Line. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am? Saw your hand, and I saw you Wendy after that.
I'm not as tall as Mrs. Cheeseman, so I'm going to bring this down. So we're just going to get that out of the way. Vertically challenged. My name is Diane Swann, and I am a resident of town, 7 North Beechwood Road, Niantic, Connecticut. I'm also the president of Stars Distem Incorporated. I spoke last week at the Board of Selectmen meeting. Nope, that's tonight. I spoke last week at the Board of Finance meeting. Unfortunately, my comments were cut off. What I went to the Board of Finance meeting for is because I had been trying since July 26, when I had been in contact with Congressman Courtney's office about the American Relief Plan and funds that would be available to Stars Distem Incorporated as a subrecipient. So in doing so, I was trying to track down members of both the Board of Finance and both the Board of Selectmen to be able to talk to them about this and how I go about bringing forth a proposal to tap into those funds under the American Relief Plan. So I did, as soon as I found that out, because Mr. Siri has attended--
I know. I didn't know if I should cut her off or not. This is a public hearing on the cannabis ordinance.
Oh, that's what I just asked. So do I just wait for public comment at the end? Not a problem.
Then they're going to go to--
Start a meeting right after this.
Oh, then I'll wait till the end. No, not a problem. You could have cut me off. I'm like a bad penny. I'll keep showing up.
Wendy, come on up. Yeah, this is a special, this is a special public hearing on the ordinance only. Sir, after Wendy, okay? After this next speaker, you can come up.
Hi, Wendy Sims, 10 Green Valley Lake Road. I'm, just for disclosure, I'm also one of the registrars here in town. I just wanted to hit up on a couple of things. I decided to read, the bill is actually 303 pages long. I took about 30 minutes this evening to kind of familiarize myself, going through the bill, looked through all the different sections. It doesn't, I mean, it takes a lot longer to actually read every single word of the bill, but I got pretty familiar with it just by sitting down, taking a few minutes. I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting when you guys decided to have the public hearing on this moratorium. There were, I think, three major concerns that you guys had. The first one I want to address is the public smoking of marijuana. In this bill, it's actually in Sections 86, 87, and 88. If you're looking at the bill online, it starts on page 134. The state has already addressed the public smoking. Yes, it is now legal to smoke. And by smoking, they mean smoking cigarettes, smoking any sort of, like, physical smoke, vaping, electronic cigarettes. That is all defined under this bill by smoking. And the state has already limited the areas where you can smoke. In municipalities of over $50,000, uh, $50,000, 50,000 citizens, you do have to have a public area where people can smoke, but under, we don't have that many people, so we don't have that. It has limited smoking in any municipal, state-owned buildings, schools, workplaces, anything like over five employees. It's imposed a 25-foot radius around any doorway, window, air intake. So I know someone brought up people walking down Main Street smoking dope, which, that doesn't happen. But that is within 25 feet of a public area. So those things have already been addressed in this bill. Again, Sections 86, 87, and 88, starts on page 134, if y'all want to take notes. Also, section, it's actually Section 126, subsection E, is the one that addresses how municipalities can spend the 3% money. There's, like, the whole section talks about how the money is dispersed, how the retailers have to file, how the municipality has to have a person that deals with getting the revenue. It's, this whole fight's all in the bill. Took me like five minutes to read it. So it says, like Ms. Zerenda outlined, it speaks of all those different things. The money can go to youth education about this. It can go to helping, especially, mental health and addiction services. It can help, you can use that money for civic engagement. These are not bad things. These are good things. It's all outlined in this bill. Doesn't take that long to read. Maybe I just read fast. Now, I want to address a comment that the outgoing first selectman mentioned about us being the first town. We are not the first town in the area. Stonington had this issue. Stonington has already voted and had a referendum. We are not the first people. We are not the first people. So we're not trailblazing. It's already been done. And that, the last concern that was brought up in the previous Board of Selectmen meeting was the moral compass of the town. We have five, I think maybe more pharmacies. My husband and I recently started watching Dope Sick. It's on Hulu. It's about the opioid crisis and about how prescription drugs, specifically OxyContin, has led to crime, has led to addiction, has led to the opioid crisis. We have five pharmacies in town dispensing opioids. I wonder if there was a discussion about the moral compass of the town when those pharmacies came? Alcohol, for years, much more addictive than marijuana. Opioids, much more addictive. Did we have a discussion about the moral compass of the town? Every time we issue a liquor license to any of the mini package stores, to the restaurants. As far as children, I know Ms. Cheeseman presented hers, but I've seen studies that actually, children nowadays are doing less, they're getting less involved in drugs because of all of the education, because we're being more open and honest about it. This is, I, I have teenagers. I hang out with their friends. I talk to them. I actually have a good relationship. Their kids, their friends are nerds. They are not going out doing weird stuff. They're inside playing D and D. Are they being like engaged in civic responsibility? Yes, kids smoke dope. Yes, they also drink. Yes, they also do other drugs. But to ban, to, excuse me, impose a six-month moratorium, we could lose out on revenue that would help our town, that would help our kids, to help us, we could use that funding to educate our children, to help this town and to help people who need services in this town. To impose a moratorium, we could lose out. A town next to us could get that. And then that's it. So it, besides, retail sales aren't supposed to start until May 2022 at the earliest. That's already seven months. We already have that. But if we impose a moratorium, we have that time already. We don't need a moratorium because we already have that time. Doesn't take that long to read the bill. Thank you.
How many people are planning on speaking this evening so that we have some sense of wrenching?
How many people are planning on speaking this evening on the six-month ban? Okay. We're gonna have to limit the time. We've let all three speakers kind of go at length and we're gonna really have to, have to bring those comments down to a three-minute thing. Please, we want, we want to hear your opinion, but you can give it to us pretty quickly. Yes, sir?
Are we voting tonight?
No, no, there's no vote by the public. It's, it's, it's an ordinance that we're considering. Thank you for the question. Sir, I did ask you to say that you could go next. Come on up to the podium. Name an address, please, in a three minutes, or all yours. There are some chairs up front for those way in the back, if you want to come on up and embarrass yourself. Come on up. Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Van Corr. I live at 107 South Beach Road, Beachwood Road in Niantic. I feel that the proposed temporary pause or ban on the marijuana establishments and smoking in public should not go forward. As Ms. Cheeseman pointed out, the first public hearings started to take place in 2017. It was also apparent that she is highly opposed to the legalization of marijuana. However, the state law which legalized recreational use of marijuana was signed by Governor Lamott four months ago in June. With all the time spent on prior public hearings and the four months which have passed since the bill was signed, should have been more than adequate time for the Selectmen Board to deter, to review and become familiar with the public act. Four months should have been enough. A zoning hearing has already been scheduled. If the Board of Selectmen wanted to place a hold or ban on a marijuana dispensary, it should have acted in a timely manner. It has not. Tobacco and alcohol are readily available in numerous retail establishments, including restaurants, grocery and convenience markets, and package stores. The facts are that tobacco is a major cause of cancer and heart disease, and it is alcohol abuse, which is the cause of many accidents and fatalities, as well as serious medical conditions. Between them, they're responsible for tens of thousands of deaths every year. But it seems that marijuana use is always the one that kind of gets everyone's angst up to real high levels, and the facts just don't support that. I do not drink or smoke. I've been an Army officer, a police officer for 24 and a half years, and a bail commissioner with the Judicial Department for 18 and a half years. The state has determined to decriminalize sale and personal consumption of marijuana by adults. The Board should allow the zoning commission to proceed with crafting appropriate regulations and turn its matter to more important, and turn its attention to more important matters. Historically, marijuana became more used during the passage of prohibition, the Volstead Act. So if marijuana use increased, we did it by attempting to prohibit alcohol. Marijuana wasn't made illegal in the United States until the passage of the Marijuana Tax Act in 1937. So it's been kicked around a lot. It's been passed by the state legislature, signed by this governor. Zoning is ready to proceed with the crafting of appropriate regulations. We don't need six months' pause. I think that's just the case that the Board wants to avoid having to make this kind of decision before the election.
Okay, thank you.
I think the points that have been brought up by several individuals have a lot of merit. The six-month moratorium, I don't think is necessary because of what the previous gentleman had just mentioned. I believe that the proposed owner-operator of this site has been considerate as to the location that she chose for her facility, that it wouldn't be downtown Niantic, that it wouldn't be a burden to the town of Niantic or to the town of Flanders, East Lime. I think if we're going to enter into a new venture, a new business to come into town, what better than to have somebody who's familiar with the business, that has been doing it, knows the ins and outs, the pros and the cons. And granted, it's not a panacea, but that funding from the taxes that are dedicated to youth, to civic involvement, these are things that we've been looking to use the American Rescue Plan money for. I think it's nice to be able to supplement that and to have a continuing, ongoing growth in that area to serve the community. I can think of other ventures that have recently been done in town. The destruction of historic buildings on Post Road in Flanders to create a dollar store and to create a medical office building with apartments next to the high school. I can think of the gateway development and the introduction of Costco with a gas station above the Aquifer. Okay, you can redraw the map lines, but it's still very dangerously close to the Aquifer. I think that the town should go ahead with this. It's a similar setting to what I see as accessory dwelling units with our zoning board. We seem to have a hesitancy in our town about moving forward with things in a timely manner, especially as we get to election season. It almost makes me come to mind of what occurred with Supreme Court justice nominations and the holding off of doing anything until a new administration was in. The town has needs that occur every day and in a timely fashion. I don't think that we can just create a moratorium to make it expedient that the next administration would have to deal with this. Thank you.
Frank Mallett, 12, McKinnon Place. Just by virtue of open disclosure, I was a practicing orthopedic surgeon here in town for 40 years. I rolled, rode the roller coaster with you of prescription opioids, and a lot of you have been my patients, and I thank you for that. I have spent the last five years of my life working in New London with Legite Health on the issue of ramifications that have occurred from the opioid crisis and the prescription problems that have led a lot of different places with respect addiction and the cost of addiction. You have heard a most articulate presentation by Lori Zerenda, for whom I have the greatest respect, and as she well knows, I supported her medical practice in that it helped a lot of my patients get over the problems of abuse by medicalization of marijuana products that were well-known and well-controlled. Having said all of that, I run the risk of being problematic here because there's a lot of passion around this issue. We are confounding rather badly some terms that I think need clarification and for which I have worked at the state with Holly Cheeseman over the last eight months. Legalization is not what we're talking about. This is not legalization. We've already done that in many respects. Medicalization at the Department of Consumer Protection has been brilliantly done by people like Lori Zerenda and Marcy Siegel, who has run the Department of Consumer Affairs. We have already significantly, in this state, decriminalized marijuana. People are no longer going to prison, which is absolutely inappropriate, for possession and even for sales of small amounts of your grandmother's marijuana. And we have engaged, despite the federal government, in very sensible research and extenuating the uses of medicalization of marijuana in appropriate miluse. What we are talking about right now is the mass legitimization, normatization, and recreationalization of a potent addictive, proven toxic brain polluter which primarily, as has been well said, affects the developing brain in its pruning. That actually goes on to age 25. We had been fighting for that not to be 21 and above, but 25 and above, if we had to go down this route. I will close my remarks by saying that I am not only in favor of this moratorium for sensible, thoughtful, deliberative, town-specific, appropriate use of the new bill, I would also like to, to recommend to everybody's reading, you can read the bill all you want, but there's a lot of gibberish in that. This is the clearest book that has been written, Smoke Screen, by Kevin Sabat, who has been working in the marijuana field for the last 20 years at the national level. This book has facts. You should consider these and consider very carefully the recreationalization of THC products in the town of East Lime and Niantic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Samuel Sims, 10 Green Valley Lake Road. I just have something I want to address. I've heard a lot of people miss Cheeseman, and I'm guessing it's a pretty common concern. But banning moratoriums, or a six-month ban or whatever, it's not going to, it's not going to get rid of marijuana in this town. Waterford has not put a moratorium on dispensaries. New London has not put a moratorium on dispensaries. Old Lime has not put a moratorium on dispensaries. Since there is no prohibition on the inter-town, on the inter-town traffic of marijuana, banning dispensaries in East Lime will do absolutely nothing to prohibit the, it will do nothing to prevent marijuana usage in the town. It will only make it so that other towns will get the, will get the, will get the revenue from the, from the dispensaries. And I'd also like to point the, the dispensary location. It is a very serious consideration for young people, 21 to 30. Sadly, there's not a lot of representation of this age, of this demographic at public meetings, but as I can attest to, having spoken to multiple younger, younger adults, they're incredibly in favor of accessible marijuana, like overwhelmingly. They're, they're very much in favor of dispensaries and stuff. I haven't, I haven't done official, like an official survey or anything, so I don't have statistics or anything I can, I can share with you. So take this with a grain of salt. But I, in prohibiting, in prohibiting dispensaries for six months, you are alienating a large base of voters and potential citizens in East Lime. So by, by redirecting dispensaries to other towns, because as has been previously stated, dispensaries are likely just gonna apply to other towns, and we're not going to have one nearly as seen as anyone else. That's the gist of what I'm trying to say. This moratorium is not going to prevent marijuana in this town. It's only going to determine whether or not we get the revenue from the dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you. You bring down the average age in the room. We appreciate that. And you're from the younger sect. We don't intend to, we don't think the marijuana is going to go away in this town if we put the six-month ban on. I don't believe so. I shouldn't speak for the other selectmen. Yes, ma'am?
May I? I'll speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, excuse me.
I know, it's not a clear path on how to get there.
Hi, I'm Donna Proman of 160 Giants Neck Road. I own a DP consulting company. I write reinsurance contracts for insurance companies. I am also a medical marijuana patient. I was a patient of Lori's at the dispensary. She was one of the first to open in the state. I met with her before she opened the dispensary because of my admiration for her as a fellow entrepreneur and because of what she was doing in Montville, where I lived and had a business at that time. My concerns in interpreting the law, the bill and the law that is being discussed here, which I have read in its entirety, is that we are, first of all, I think the town's ban is looking at a dispensing facility versus a growing facility lumping them together as far as concerns for fire hazards, fumes, and other things, whereas my understanding is they have to be operated separately still, such as marijuana. So you're not going to have enormous grow plants in the industrial park. You're just going to have a storefront. Every time I've been in, it used to be Thames Valley Relief, and it's now the Botanist in Montville, I've never seen any fumes or detected any, anything unpleasant. In fact, this location-- In fact, this location in the industrial park where it's located, I think would not be a threat to town security, would not in any way involve use of further town resources. And just in closing, I'd just like to say that when Governor Lamont signed this bill, he said, "This law is the first step at correcting the injustices and disparities of the war on drugs, and this new law eliminates the dangerous, unregulated market and supports a new and equitable sector of our economy that will create jobs." I feel that by postponing this, that this is in direct repudiation of what Governor Lamont's intentions are for this bill and that our town will lose in this opportunity because of lottery and application system. And I also believe as a town that is disproportionately represented by minorities and black people and where it is four to one with arrests of black people versus white people, according to the American Civil Liberties Union, black residents are four times more likely than their white counterparts to be arrested for marijuana possession. So this is part of an important change in attitude in our state led by our governor that I think it would be well for our town, which is rooted in tradition and some old-fashioned thinking perhaps to think forward-looking towards its business scope. And then finally, I'd like to cite the Pewris Research Study that found that 91% of all Americans involved polled, which is a large study group, which is also being looked at by the insurance companies that I work for, over 91% support medical legalization and recreational use of cannabis in their town because of the benefits, because of the ending of overuse of opiates, which I see in this town all the time. I see drunk driving in this town all the time. We both work in the insurance industry. We know what drunk driving does. I think that that's a far more harm to this town than anything that would be sold at a recreational dispensary. So in conclusion, as a small business owner and as a medical patient here that probably wouldn't even go to the recreational facility, I support it from a business perspective and because I think it's in accordance with Governor Lamont's intention and law.
Thank you. I do believe the bill does allow for the cultivation and production, not just dispensing. Am I right, Holly?
Right. They're all different areas.
In different areas. There's no question about it, and that's what we are pulling back. And I'm not concerned about what's in the bill. It's what's not in the bill that we're most concerned about, building code, all sorts of things that go along with, again, production, cultivation, and then the dispensary of marijuana. It's not just one avenue we're looking at here. While one store is being proposed, we're talking about a massive industry that could come. Yes, ma'am. Jamie, is that you hiding behind that mask?
Sorry. So my name is Jamie Barshelburn. I live at 31 McElhenney Drive, and the disclosure is I am a Board of Education member. I'm here tonight to speak my support of the proposed ordinance. I am a survivor of parents with addiction. I have seen firsthand the harm that it has caused families. I'm sorry. I'm going to just apologize now because I will tear up. As a child and a young adult, I have experienced abandonment by parents, abuse by family members because my parents chose to escape our life by smoking. One of my parents, her smoking turned into harder drugs and the loss of her children. For my other parents, that smoking turned into excessive drinking and the loss of his children. No child should have to face an addict parent and always wonder if that addiction will be passed through their genes. As I am not completely comfortable sharing my entire life story with all of you and the tragedy that that includes, I will say that yes, I have survived, but not without a lot of support along the way. I'm not here to bait the medical benefits that it offers, but the destruction that recreational use can cause to families. I would also like to speak briefly about accepting the fruits of the poisonous tree. Yes, our town would receive money from the taxes of cannabis sales. That money is then supposed to be used for our youth, addiction services, and to help with rehabilitation. This seems a little strange because without the drugs in the community, we wouldn't need the rehabilitation. This seems counterintuitive to me as we already have a drug and rehabilitation problem in our state and in our town. So why would we willingly accept money from drug sales to fund the already broken system? It seems like a vicious circle to me with regards to receiving tax funds from the state. This is a broken record that we've been listening to for years. State lottery funds to schools, car taxes to repair roads, excess cost sharing, the list goes on. The point being that the state makes a lot of promises and mandates to towns about money being funneled down that is never appropriated correctly. I question whether this circumstance will be one of those series of false hopes and broken promises. As I am also a member of our town's youth coalition since inception, for those that may not know, the town's youth coalition is made up of Ann Daigle, Dave Putnam, C-Rack, Ledgelite, students, school staff, and myself. We plan programs for our community about suicide awareness, social media misuse, addiction, and parent awareness programs. We have written grants for funds to help us. I have organized and run many Harlem Wizards basketball games to help with our budget. Our schools have been asking for funds for numerous budget cycles to help with social workers, drug and alcohol counselors, and psychologists, and our asks are usually met not usually met with a positive response. This year, we are finally getting help on all of our fronts for our community, but it wasn't without a lot of begging along the way. With the town's work... I'll skip that. Lastly, I would like to address the ban on public property. Apparently, we have a tobacco ban in all town beaches, parks, and school facilities. I have yet to see this ban enforced. While I agree with the ban of cannabis usage in addition to tobacco on town properties, I feel the enforcement of it is as unrealistic as our attempt to ban tobacco. Whenever I see one someone smoking at the parks, beaches, or school property, I make mention of it to them, and they shrug it off. I wonder what steps would be implemented to prevent the same disregard that the tobacco ban has if we try the same with cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you for your courage and your personal story as well. It's hard to do. It's hard to do. Thank you. Congratulations. You won a big award being a Board of Ed member recently. You won a big, big award for all your work. Thank you very much, Jamie. You're happy to talk. Your dedication is great. Yes, sir. Come on up. It's hard to do. Yes, sir. Thanks for coming.
Hi. My name is Ray Elmer, 6 Will Lane, East Lime or 137 Niantic. You've got a couple houses, actually.
Thank you for that.
One thing is that you guys are saying that we want to put a moratorium on this, want to stop it, but the problem with this is if we do lose it, like Laurie's saying, is we lose this opportunity now, it's going to go away. It's no different than when we had an opportunity to have the Harley-Davidson shop come in here. You know, we had a great business. They were going to put a restaurant in, they were going to put in the store. They had all this thing. And then we had East Lime fighting it. We don't want this. We don't want this in our town. We don't want motorcycles. We don't want the sound, all this craziness. We let bobs come in. They come in, they probably got a tax break for coming in here, and then what do they do after the tax break goes away? They leave. See ya. Go somewhere else and do it. We had a great opportunity for making some money, and now we just blow it. Every time, we don't have all these opportunities come along. Waterford keeps having opportunities. They have good industrial places. Here we are in East Lime. We thought, you know, we had a lot of professional people, a lot of people worked at Pfizer. So then we said, "Oh, well, we want all these services because we're rich. We're people have money. We want garbage. We want all these pickups and ones." Who's going to pay for it now when they're all gone? We don't have all those taxes that we used to have. So what do we do now? They've still got the garbage pickup. They've still got all the people working in town. We've got to pay for all those people. So in order for them to pay for it, we've got to have money. Where's the money going to come from? And if you think that marijuana is going away, you're crazy. It's been approved everywhere. It's approved here. Why not our town? I'd assume having my town is some other town where I can at least gain something out of it. And everybody thinks that, oh, it's going to be... Or even like the driving thing. They say that the number of people that were tested have marijuana in their system. Just because you have marijuana in your system doesn't mean you're under the influence of marijuana. You can have marijuana in your system for 30 days, and the heavier you are, the lower the stain in your system. So you're saying you test them, you test somebody, oh, they got it in their system. Oh, they were under the influence of marijuana. Does that mean that you couldn't drive? All I know is I am a marijuana patient. If I'm too high, I'm not going to want to drive. It's just the way it works. If you're too drunk, you're like, give me the keys. I'm there to go. It's a big difference. There's a huge difference in the mentality of drinking and smoking or ingesting marijuana. If you were too high, you are not going to drive. It's the way it is. But that's personal experience, and that's how I feel. And if they think, if we pass this up now, it's just going to go away, and we won't have it, and somebody else is going to have it. I'd rather have our town have it than Waterford have it or New London or even Old Lime. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Anyone else have any new information? Yes, sir. Something for us to ponder.
My name's Kurt Hayes, 13 Joyce Court, Niantic. I mean, I've heard a lot of good things tonight, but I think, like Ray says, marijuana is coming. I mean, if it's not here, it's going to be Waterford, Old Lime, could be anywhere, New London, whatever. I don't know what happened with, like, in the '60s when Millstone, I don't know if they wanted to come here, but we all, we didn't benefit. We looked at it. They got the benefits. So I think as a board, you guys need to look at what's best for our town. I mean, there's so many opinions on this. You guys really need to figure out what's really best for the town and where it's going to go. And I don't know if you guys waiting to do that is going to affect what's best for our town. I mean, I think you need to, you guys need to step it up and figure it out because you got somebody from our town who's already been in business. She's not some big company coming in just trying to make money. Obviously, she's still here, you know? I understand what you're all saying. I get it. You know, everybody's got an opinion. They got things that have happened in their lives, but it's about what's best for this town right here and what's around us and what's going to affect us here. And that's your decision. That's why you guys chose to be where you are.
Exactly right.
So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. That's why we are here. Kurt, you've got a minute and 40 seconds to go if you want. You want to come up, sir?
I don't want to be first. I'll hand to the keys right now.
My name is Sean Glidden. I live at 317 Boston Post Road. I do have my medical marijuana card. I do smoke, but I can tell you what, I do not buy in state, you know? I don't buy to the state next to us. I don't go two states. I go to three states away, you know, so that way I could purchase what I need because it's relaxing for me. I have a traumatic brain injury. It's really hard for me to relax. So I've been to a lot of dispensaries here in Connecticut, and they're all different. You've got one in each town, and they all do it differently, and they all supply different products. Half of them don't even know what the hell they're selling. You know, who's to say, no offense, but who's to say what you grow is going to be good for me or for everybody else because there are sativas and because hybrids and every plant's different just because of its chemical makeup, you know? And I know that's time. It's a lot, that's a lot of time, and you're already behind time, you know, which is unfortunate. I'm not here to speak one way or another. I'm actually just presenting information. And as far as you wanting to make sure that all the protocols, procedures, and everything is in place, well, I mean, that's good, you know? But every town does have one grower that they can basically pick, you know? And that's hard, you know? And I do support you being a small business owner and kind of starting on your own, you know? But that's, so to say that these are the possibilities or this is what we can offer doesn't mean that it's going to always be 100%. You know, I'm all for legalization, you know, and recreational smoking. This is a really hard subject for anybody to really pinpoint a 100% guarantee on. As far as the taxes, yeah, that'd be great for our town, you know? I mean, if people come to it, you know? But I know East Lime is a very desirable town, and it attracts a lot of attention. So maybe it will be great, you know? So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Come on up. We want to hear everything.
Jay VanZach, 10 Old Stone Way. Oh, Jay VanZach, 10 Old Stone Way. You know, just obviously, nobody's talking about the actual legalization because that's done, right? So now it's just a function of, you know, this six-month moratorium. I don't even think anybody's going to fight you on six months and use in public spaces. Nobody really, you know, if you guys want to think about that, great, go ahead. But with regards to missing out on an opportunity, that's another thing. And I know you referenced saying, well, we need to think about requirements and, you know, rules we've got to put in place for a business like that to operate. You have a playbook right now from the state with regards to what they do for medicinal. So if you did nothing but run off of just those outlines as far as what the requirement is for the business, you'd have something to go off of. It doesn't take six months to read a bill. It's 300 pages. Okay? That's all I got.
Yes. Okay. Thanks, Jamie. Yeah, we know what the bill says. We know what the bill says. It's the implementation per town that we're looking at. Anyone else for or against, or can we wrap this public hearing up and go to the Board of Selectment meeting? Anyone else? Any other hands? Don't want to cut anyone off? It has been a passionate conversation tonight. So I thank you all. You know, sometimes, and this is passionate, this is a big one, right? And sometimes people aren't polite in some of these instances. I've heard stories way back. They were fighting, man, you know? They were down at the cafeteria at the high school, and they were throwing things at each other. This has been very polite and respectful, and I appreciate you coming out and giving us your opinion, and it's hard for us, too. We, Kurt said it best, we're interested in what's best for the town and what is, you know? And we'll figure that out. We heard your conversation. We'll have a conversation as well and probably deliberate a little bit more in the coming weeks as we start to talk about this. So thank you all. I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Sir.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing.